Presbyterian believes in indication. David, welcome, sir.
Let us pray. Gracious God, as a new year beginnings comes about, Lord, we pray that you would continue to give us vision for the things that you've called us to do. We pray that you would continue to give vision to this council in the upcoming year as they look at new projects, as they look at new ways to continue to make Weatherford a wonderful city to live in. We just pray that you would bless them in their decisions. And God, as always, that we would always keep our eyes and our hearts and our minds focused on you as you lead us. And we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thanks for being here, sir. This time I'll call the meeting to order and announce that we do have a quorum present tonight at our council meeting. With the record reflect, Councilman Robinson cannot be with us tonight. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags, and Kevin Cleveland will be leading us in those this evening.
If you would please stand and join me for the pledge to the US than the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S., one state under God, one and indivisible.
All righty, item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hotop.
Just two. One, Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and so we will be closed on the 17th in observance for Martin Luther King Day. We'll be normal sanitation service around town, so folks will get their garbage picked up. And then the second thing is we had a recent retirement in the capital projects area, and so announcing tonight. So Chad obviously has been shadowing Terry for the past couple of years in anticipation that we would make an appointment there. And so we're happy to announce that Chad is our new director of capital projects.
Congratulations, sir. City council, anything for items of community interest? All righty, let's go down to item five, which is presentations and proclamations. Five A is a proclamation recognizing Weatherford Christian School's 20th anniversary. Council, if you don't mind, join me down front. All righty, y'all come on up. We have three great leaders here from Weatherford Christian School led by Dr. Beth Riley this evening. Welcome. Everybody get situated here. Tonight we, in the city of Weatherford, we are excited to have multiple different kinds of education opportunities in our city for our children. We have public schools and we have a couple of great private schools, and then some families choose to homeschool or maybe there's a charter school option. But tonight we recognize Weatherford Christian School on 20 years of providing quality education in our community to our citizens and their children. And we're going to present you with a proclamation recognizing that anniversary. Would you come on up, Dr. Riley? Says whereas Weatherford Christian School, WCS, was established in 2001 with 69 students, and whereas now with 372 students, the WCS mission is provide a Christ-centered educational environment where children are equipped for lives of Christian leadership and service. And whereas their goal is to glorify God in everything they do as they work to accomplish their mission. And whereas WCS emphasizes the spiritual development of their students and puts God at the center of everything they do. And whereas students strive for excellence in academics, citizenship, athletics, community service, and every other aspect of the educational process. And whereas at WCS, church, family, and education work together to ensure the students are motivated to serve God and man academically, spiritually, physically, and socially. Now therefore, the Weatherford City Council does hereby recognize Weatherford Christian School's 20th anniversary in appreciation of their dedication to their students and to our great community. And testimony whereof witnessed my hand and the seal of the great city of Weatherford this 11th day of January 2020. How about a round of applause for Weatherford Christian School? Happy birthday. Set that down. Y'all scoot on in here. If you don't mind, let's get a picture. Just a minute, get settled, boy. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Dr. Riley, we'd like to give you an opportunity to share just a little bit about Weatherford Christian School. But before I give you the microphone, are y'all committing to at least another 20 years? And the same growth you've given us the first 20 years? All righty, you can have the microphone. Dr. Beth Riley.
First, I want to introduce the individuals with me today was the secondary principal, Karen Mooney, and then Tracy Garv and our director of missions. I only brought the healthy ones with us. We have a school full of unhealthy individuals, and so we just wanted to bless you with the healthy. So anyways, otherwise, the team is larger than the three of us. But I just want to thank the city of Weatherford. It has been a great partnership. We love the city of Weatherford. We love to know, we know that you support us in everything we do. That's a huge blessing. Not every private school has that, so we count that as a huge blessing. WCS has grown. We are out of space. So we are looking for someone that's willing to give us a couple million dollars to build our next building. And so we are truly blessed. We do have a waiting list right now for six of our grades. And so we just are looking for ways to find a space for all the sweet babies. And so we feel like every day we're blessing kids with just sharing our faith and just being able to love on them and just make sure that they know they're important and they are God's children. So thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Riley. All righty, council, thanks for your participation in that. Item six on the agenda is consent agenda items. We have items six A and six B, council. We entertain those as a body, or we can talk about them individually, which is a pleasure. It appears we have a motion for approval of both items with Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion? Conversation on six A or six B before we call for a vote.
Yeah, I was part of the process for the parks master plan.
Sir.
And it was, it was, it was an intense process with lots of community input. And so I was just excited about the opportunity to be a part of that. So just want to give my, like, I'm excited about what we've got going on there, so.
Appreciate you sharing that. Thanks for your participation. Any other comments on consent? All righty, let's vote on six A and six B. Please indicate yea or nay. Let's pass four to zero. Item seven is regular agenda items. Seven A is discuss, consider an alternative meeting schedule for the month of July 2022. Mr. Hotop.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of councils.
This is kind of my fault we're having this discussion. Thanks for leaving the conversation.
You know, we typically have two meetings a month on the second and fourth Tuesday, and then there's a couple of times a year in November and December where we kind of consider an alternate schedule based on the holidays and just trying to maximize the amount of time we spend with our family. So there has been some discussion, at least at a staff level, and we talked about with the mayor is just possibly looking at another time of year where we do something similar. That would be in July. Typically, you know, there's a lot of family activities scheduled for staff and for the council in the summer. And so we just tried to want to look at, is there a possibility of trying to being able to maximize the scheduling time everyone has around the Fourth of July holiday and doing possibly just one meeting, which would be that Fourth Tuesday in July. And so I didn't know if that was something you were open to and something we can kind of look at scheduling wise. And so just submit that for your discussion.
Council votes, discussion?
I think it's a great idea. I think we have a lot of times where people struggle to make meetings at end of the summer when we try to wrap up family events. Only thing we need to take into consideration is leading up to that, that meeting, making sure we get everything timely put together so that we don't hold any P and Z projects.
Is there any short deadlines that that would affect?
No.
The June last city council meeting in June to, if it was the fourth, any deadlines that we wouldn't make for planning, zoning, anything like that?
That's a good question. Of course, we do have the 30-day clock that we're required to approve Platts by. This past year, we have gone to one meeting for P and Z and haven't found the need for two. We kind of keep that second date in reserve if we need to, but it hasn't presented itself as a problem. So we don't anticipate that'll be a problem in July. If we were to face that situation, then we would have to schedule a meeting, at least for a Platte approval in some form or fashion, just to meet that state requirement, which we can always do if the, if the need arises. But so far, the planning staff has really worked with all the applicants and scheduling those in a way that hasn't affected our normally scheduled P and Z meetings. So the only other thing that's of concern out there is just as we start the budget process, but typically that happens right after that in the start of August, kind of that timeframe. And so obviously Dawn and the rest of the folks are working at a feverish pace towards the end of the month. And so that just gives us a little bit more extra time for that as well.
Mr. Tiscus thoughts, questions?
I'm all for it. Think it's a good idea.
Great. Doesn't require formal action, council, but certainly by all means, we want an input from all stakeholders and just circle around Mr. Robinson, too, and make sure that he's comfortable with that, that change. We sure appreciate that, all of us.
I'll do it.
Any other comments on seven A before we move on? Seven B is to receive a report, consider the adoption of resolution R 2022-01, setting a public hearing on land use assumptions and a capital improvement plan relating to possible adoption of roadway impact fees. Chad Marbit.
Mr. Mayor, council, Chad Marbit, Director of Capital Projects. So tonight I'll talk a little bit about impact fee study that we began in March last year, that we proceeded to establish our capital improvement advisory committee. We did that in October. An hour before you wanting to set the public hearing that we need, the first public hearing we're going to have. First, we'll have just a quick update and overview of the study and where we're at with it by our consultant. So I want to introduce Jeff Whitaker with Emily Horn. He'll be going through his slides with you. I'll get back up here.
Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's going to be relatively short presentation. I know you've heard some about this, and so we're going to give you the speed to where we are right now. Go a little about the process we've been to, the process we're going to go through, a little bit of the impact fee comments, concepts, and then really the heart of the presentation, the resolution in front of you is to look to adopt the land use assumptions we're going to propose and the capital improvements plan. So this is the schedule. In October, we met with the capital improvements advisory committee, gave a very similar presentation, got their input. They gave us a few comments, and I'll highlight the comments that they gave us. And they were ready for us to move forward to bring forward the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan to you. Today, we're having the workshop. And you may ask, why is this scheduled the way it is? Well, the state law dictates the procedure that we have to go through to adopt impact fees. I know you recently adopted the water and wastewater, and that's an update. This is a new one, so that's a little bit more rules that we have to go through since roadway is new. So a lot of these dates are required by state law. So the setting of the public hearing tonight is one of those steps that are required. And the public hearing will happen February 22. We have to advertise that public hearing for 30 days, et cetera. So you'll see a lot of that through this impact fee process. So really, there's four steps to an impact fee study. The first step is the planning step. That's what the public hearing is about in February. Here are the assumptions we're making on the plan. And then after that meeting, we do the analysis, which is what is the rate that we calculate? That's called the analysis step. And we have a public hearing after that, and then it goes into policy and adoption. Kind of the last three steps run together a little bit faster than the first step. So just to give you a quick update, there's some requirements of the capital improvements advisory committee that y'all have appointed. Their job is to be our advisory committee to, you know, review our land use assumptions, review the capital improvement plan, and ultimately to give us some impact on the impact fees that we calculate. And then their job doesn't necessarily stop at this study. Every six months, they review the program and see if we need to make any updates if the program was to move forward. Then obviously, city council reviews the land use assumptions, capital permits plan, the impact fees, considers the comments from C I C, and then kind of moves forward as the process goes along. So just a little bit, why do cities, I like to put this slide just to kind of remind why different cities do impact fees. And really, the reason is, is for equitable reasons. A development comes in, it's predictable, they understand the fee that they're going to pay, and it's kind of known upfront. It assures accountability and makes sure that, that the city staff is doing their fair way to calculate the impact fee, but also that each development's contributing equally and proportionally. It's a systematic way to really understand the proportional impact of the development. That's really what the impact fees calculating is. When a development comes in, what is the impact to the system? And what's their fair share to pay towards that impact? And then it's really consistent with goals outlined in the transportation plan. Everything that you see in here is either based upon your general plan, from your conference of plan, your general plan, or based upon your master transportation plan. We're just taking all those documents and putting them into one, one item to develop the impact fee. Just for those who may be watching, an impact fee is a one-time fee for new development. It's not for existing buildings. It's for when new development comes in to build a new building. It's the mechanism to recover the infrastructure with that growth. Some developments are able to build some of their infrastructure because they're larger, they can build some of their infrastructure. Some of the smaller developments, they still have an impact on the system. They're, it'll pay towards future developments. Like, they might pay a portion of a future signal that comes in, et cetera. It's one of the, it's the only legal way to collect a flexible fee for infrastructure. And it really gives a city the freedom to collect that infrastructure money. And as you'll see, there's a list of projects. They can use that money on that list of projects in a flexible way. So the city can, you know, if you, if a developer's building a project, they're going to build what's in front of them, while the city can collect the money, pool it in a way that hits their highest priorities, the needs of the city. It's chapter by local government, 395, statute written 1987. It's a, it's actually just an anecdotal. It's the longest impact fee statute of any state. So Texas really is prescriptive on how to calculate impact fees compared to other states. It tells us what to do. So there's a lot of things that when we go through the calculation, why'd you do that way? Well, that's what's outlined in the state law. We have to do it that way. There's four legal impact fees. You have two of them I mentioned. You have water and wastewater already. We're looking at roadway today. What can you pay with impact fees? Anything that adds capacity, that's what I think, anything that adds new lanes or capacity to the network, something that brings something new. You can't maintain your existing network. That's what's really important, is you can't go overlay your potholes, you can't, you know, resurface your roadways. You got to widen turn lanes, add lanes, anything that adds capacity. But what's also important is you can also pay anything associated with that. You can pay engineering right away. Right away can be expensive components to obtain. You can also pay for the debt service. You can pay for the debt difference on that, as well as any plan studies you need. As I mentioned, you can't pay for anything that's not related to the CIP that we're going to show you. For a roadway, you can't go buy a fire truck with the impact. You have to use it for the projects in there. You can't remedy existing deficiencies, maintenance. And one of the things that state law is clear is you can't use it for anything but the projects to administer the program. The administration of the program has to come from the general fund. The money collected is just for those projects. You can't use it for staff time. So just a quick overview, the land use assumptions, it's based on a 10-year growth projections. Sometimes people are, well, what is the window? We're looking at a 10-year growth projections. The state law makes us update this every five years. So we're looking 10 years out, updating five years. And really, what we utilize as the basis of our land use assumptions is the recently updated 2021 water and wastewater impact fee. We want to make sure both of our studies were in alignment with each other, so we use the same baseline assumptions. So one of the things that's different for the roadway is we have to divide the city into service areas. And the ideal behind that is you're collecting money in an area, and you spend that money in that same area so that if a developer's paying money, that it's close to their development. So the state law has some requirements about how big these service areas are. And these are the service areas that we worked with the advisory committee and staff to outline that kind of made sense when we started looking at the growth projections and the projects in the area. So just to look at some current trends, as you probably are aware, you know, between 2014 to 2018, pretty steady around that 200 number. You've had a kind of a shoot up because of some recent subdivisions, you know, going up to 2021, but we're projecting roughly 460 to, when those numbers came out. So relatively constant for a few years, but recently you've seen kind of an uptick. When we looked at that, we looked at the single-family, multifamily, basic service and retail. So single-family is your typical detached housing. Multifamily, you can be your townhomes and also your apartments. Basic is your kind of industrial type of developments, low traffic generators. Service is kind of your office, your professional services, and retail is your commercial. So we divided it up among the service areas. And roughly, we're at, you know, roughly that 200 per year, single-family with some multifamily put it in there, kind of, kind of hitting that average over the next 10 years. And one of the things that's important, as we looked at this growth rate, it came out to about a two and a half percent growth rate, which matches the growth rate used in the water and wastewater plan. And we use it based on actual plan developments that we know are coming. That's what this map shows, some of the developments that we know are coming, plus other ones that we think might come in the future. So it was actually rooted in some science. If you look at the growth, that what that means is now you're roughly around 33,000 people. In 10 years, we're projecting around 42,180 at about a two and a half, 2.5% growth rate. That's kind of the summary of the land use assumptions. The capital improvements plan, we, we'll show you, I'm just going to highlight, the capital improvements plan is, we met with the advisory committee, they gave us some input. They actually, one of their input was to add a interchange project at the, at the interchange of 20 and South Bowie Drive. And we kind of relooked at it and agreed that's probably a project we should have had in the plan. We know it's tech stop, the city's going to have some participation in there. And we also allocated funding towards a potential transportation master plan. One of the things we can look is future planning. So those are two comments from the advisory committee that we incorporated into the capital improvements plan. So just a map of the proposed capital improvements plan. This was based on a lot of the results, if you remember the CIP citizen survey and city input. We utilized that input to develop this capital improvements plan. So it was the input from that, plus those two comments we just talked about from the C I C, where we added that intersection project. But this is kind of a summary of the, the projects. If you look at it, there are some red projects on here. Those represent new roadway projects. Those are projects that, roads that don't exist today, that are new projects that we had. And then there are green projects. Those are projects that exist today, but we can add lanes, turn lanes, to widen. And then there's some intersection projects. One of the things that you'll note when you start getting into more of the established areas of town, some of the roads are built, and the best way to improve capacity on those roads is to widen intersections. So we added some of those. With that, that's a brief summary of the, the reports also on the packet. One of the things that's important by state law is we have to make that report available. So the reports attached to the packet, and that's the summary of the report. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have. And I just put the schedule up here just to kind of walk through the schedule. The first public hearing will be in May. After that public hearing, we'll finalize the study, meet back with the C I C in March to go over the results. And then we'll be coming back to you in May and June to kind of finalize the report. That's the current plan.
Just to clarify, you said the first public hearing would be in May, but I think you meant February?
Yeah, the first public, sorry, the public hearing on the land use assumptions capital improvement will be February 22. And then the second public hearing will be June 14.
Okay, right.
Any questions on the presentation? Thanks for the clarification. Cleveland? Hey, thank you for being here tonight, sir. We look forward to follow-up reports down the line. Closing comments, sir?
No, sir, just the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution for the public hearing.
Staff is recommending approval of the resolution as presented. Let me change screens here. We do have a motion on full by Mayor Pro Tim for approvals presented, second by Matt Tiscus. Any conversation on seven B before we call for a vote? Hearing now, we'll vote on it this time, seven B. Please indicate yea or nay at this time. All righty, that passes also. We'll go to item eight on the agenda, which is staff reports. Eight A is a notification of green ribbon funding award for the US 180 corridor enhancements. Welcome back, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, Chad Marbit, Director of Capital Projects, in front of you again. So pretty proud to announce that we were awarded again some green ribbon funds for US 180. It's a corridor enhancements there. So one thing I want to note is our general plan identifies city gateways of one of our top 10 priorities. So going after these projects is really important to us. I'm sure you're familiar with the improvements that we've done on South Main, phase one and two, excuse me, the South Main green ribbon improvements. Those are funded in 2019 and 2020 through the same program. We took that same concept and applied it to the Eastern Gateway, as you see highlighted there, and we submitted that to the state for green ribbon funds mid 2021. So it was rare to win two years in a row. Now we've done it essentially three times in a row, so we're in good shape there. This is a zoom in for the project. We'll show you the limits of it. It'll be going from FM 730 over to the new Center Point Road intersection where the East Loop ties in. Now, the enhancements that we're proposing is real similar to South Main. We're going to match the style and everything. We'll replace grass and asphalt median, improve plantings, decorative aggregate. And then we're also going to include any, you know, associated irrigation required or electric. We also want to include landscape icons, the same style as you see on South Main Street. One challenge with this, though, is the roadway does have a higher speed limit, so it's a little more strict requirements from the state as far as what size we can do and how close to the curb. But we're navigating that right now with the local office. The award amount was $400,000 in construction funds, and that's for landscaping only. With this grant, similar to the others, we're, we'll be responsible for any overruns in construction, and then anything that we do like additional curb or the monuments and landscape icons, we're going to have to fund those aspects of it. So we'll work through the details on that. We're going to start with the state finalized design. We're lucky that we have been working on this in the meantime, anticipating that we would get it for the award. So we are pretty far along in design. So moving quickly, we're going to finalize that with the state, and then I'll bring an AFA in front of you, same as we do with the other state projects, a funding agreement allocating what we're going to use for what. So with that, there's no action for you to take tonight. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, congratulations on the third award, green ribbon project award in a row. Any questions or comments?
When do we apply for number four? I mean...
Got it ready.
Did have a couple of comments, again, other than congratulations, but you're always going to hear me say this, but the only thing worse than landscaping is landscaping that's not taken care of. So we have, we'll have a planned follow-up to maintain and to take care of this, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
And the second thing is, I think that corridor is fairly dark in the evenings. And so certainly, that's not the scope of this project. But if that's the opportunity, since we're dealing with electricity in that medium, to look at some possible illumination opportunities at the same time with economies of scale, I would sure hope that we take a look at that.
Yes, sir.
Hey, thank you very much. We look forward to more information. No action required on this item tonight, council. If y'all are okay with that, we'll shift on down to eight B for the annual code enforcement report. Caleb Kettner, Happy New Year, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Did you win an award, too? Did you get a grant or anything?
Didn't win an award.
That's next month, right?
That's right. We do want to just kind of, code enforcement has been a, a, a big topic for the council for a couple of years now. And we have an annual report that we'll now present to you every year, and we'll transform this into quarterly reports for you to see where we are in the progress that we're making in our, in the community as a, as a whole. And so we, we've taken the goals and the direction that we've received from the council in your meetings since 2019 in updating and, and looking at our code enforcement results. And as you can see from our numbers, we've had an exponential growth as far as what we've been able to accomplish in code compliance cases. Doing more with less has been kind of our, as we move forward with accomplishing these goals. There is a lot of complaints. These are our top three complaints that we were, community, high weeds and grass, unlawful accumulations in people's yards, and motor vehicle violations. I do want to point out that code enforcement only does part of the motor vehicle violations. That's only on private, on, on property, private property. The other part of that is, is violations on motor vehicles on, on the streets, right away, which is also, is handled by the police department and is one of their biggest complaints that they receive from the community as well. But we tag-team that and work really hard to work with our community to understand why we're aiming to be the strongest community, as well as making our community beautiful across the board. And so you can see kind of a breakdown of our code cases, what those codes cases have been for 2021. High weeds and grass are by far the, the largest case that we have. And it just breaks, we break it down for you as far as what those cases are as we move forward. We look at the code enforcement cases per month, per, and this is what we're seeing on a regular basis. We're, we have transferred from being a reactive, strictly reactive code enforcement to a proactive at, at the direction of the council. It has been very productive. Our community has responded very well. They, they want to keep our community beautiful. They're calling us and letting us know. They're talking to their company to help, to help abate some of these situations. Our substandard buildings also, over time, that has somewhat slipped in the numbers of us keeping up on that. And in, but this past year, in 2021, we've had a total of 65 cases. 14 of those had to go to building and standards for actions by the building and standards. We had 26 voluntary compliance cases, either removed or abated the situation themselves. And we have 25 currently in process for those. These are kind of a couple of examples of before and after, when we've worked with individuals to, that these cases have gone to building and standards where they were ordered to, to repair, and they have repaired those and, and have made a big difference in those neighborhoods. And I believe you can see those big changes in the neighborhoods just driving around in the community this last year and a half. We've seen a lot more progress in that. You see the total number of our cases compared to what we've done in the past have, has, has been... been a large number greater. And again, we've been getting a great response from the public and our citizens to help make our community better. And we also unfortunately have the, when it gets to the point where we we don't get compliance, unfortunately, we we will have to resort to writing a citation. This is our citations for twenty twenty one and where those citations are in the process. And so we had a total sixteen total citations have to be written, which considering over over two thousand cases in the year, only having to write sixteen, that's pretty good. But we would like to avoid that completely if we could. But unfortunately, that it does come to that at times. And so we've we hope we're meeting the goals of the of the city council and has established, and we're enforcing the regulations that have been adopted. We're here to answer any questions.
I just want to mention that number again, so it's really heard, about two hundred complaint or two hundred cases a month, so over two thousand total in a year. And out of that, though, we hear a lot about the city trying to find people, we only came up with sixteen total citations for the entire year. So it's it's a pretty impressive number to know that we're we're communicating and getting things done without putting a lot of fines and fees on.
That's a great point, Caleb.
This information is so helpful to see just at your fingertips like that. So thank you for providing that for us. With the number of cases, how are we doing in staffing in that department?
The council approved a third code enforcement officer, which will help us on that level and and we just hired and filled that position in January. So there just started. And so you'll probably see an even higher number of of those go up. We're we'll be able to respond quicker. Our goal has been to tighten it down as far as we want to work in the neighborhoods. One of the goals of the community was to, you know, we don't want to write citations. We want to work. We have put together a list, one of the examples of of all the service organizations from churches to to Boy Scouts, to the Girl Scouts, to all these other clubs and organizations that have volunteered and given us their information that if someone needs assistance, they're there to help reach out. And so we're trying to pair up those because we do run into situations from time to time where maybe it's someone who's elderly or has been sick or is unable to take care of those things. We're trying to put those, team those up together. Some of our goals moving forward is is we want to look at some programs that can also be that carrot to help people in those situations because we're getting to the point, we're getting caught up on our building and standards cases. It'll always be there, but I don't know that we'll continue to have forty new cases a year that we handle. But we're getting down to the point of, you know, people maintaining the outsides of their homes, if they're painted homes and things like that. And so we want to look at maybe some programs that could help those individuals, whether it's a and so we'll be bringing those forward to you, to the management team to to consider as we move forward.
Questions or comments? Anything else?
The only other thing I had is, you know, looking at the numbers, that's great, and I think we just keep in our mind that customer service is always number one. We have goals that we're trying to accomplish. The goals need to be accomplished with the citizens, not despite the citizens. So let's make sure we try to keep those numbers like that and make sure we're we're keeping customers in mind and.
Absolutely. That's that's one of our main goals on there is is we want to do that with voluntary, with excellent customer service. We're going to work as best we can with every individual, if they need time, if they need help. But at the same time, you have adopted regulations that you want them to follow, but we're we're doing our very best to work with everyone. So as you can see, only sixteen citations. That's we're we're doing our best to work with everyone, so.
Every one of those conversations are difficult conversations.
Right.
There's not one of those conversations that are easy. And so when you look at that data on the first couple of slides you showed, you're actually doing a lot more with the same staff or very close to the same staff in the last couple of years.
Yes.
And that shows efficiency and processes and things that are a huge improvement, and the data tells that story. That's not an opinion. The data tells the story. But what we're seeing to me is really the beginning of transformations of certain communities in our city. And you find when when one or two people, if we go in and do pavement and curbs, and then you get one or two people on the street to clean up a home or remodel, even small things, just landscaping that require labor, then the neighbors start doing it. And then you see a transformation and pride developing neighborhoods. And I think that's really the ultimate goal of councils, not to not to to be in anybody's business or be provide education and options and how those things can be done, and also to help protect the property values, short and long term, of our community.